I call to order the City of North Pole regular meeting, May 20, May 2nd, 2022 via Zoom. Also via our YouTube channel and our Facebook. It's May 2nd, 2022 at 7:01 PM. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Claus.
Here.
Mr. Cromer.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
This is Welch.
Here.
There Welch.
Here. And Mr. Skips is absent. Thank you. I need, Madam Clerk, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Councilman Keller, would you do the invocation, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Our dear Father, we come before you this time and ask thee to please help us as we discuss the matters of the North Pole City. And we ask you to please get our thoughts and our feelings and our hearts to do the right things. And we ask you to please bless those who are in harm's way, the first responders, those citizens experiencing some flooding. Please bless them that they may have comfort and that they may be able to find solutions to their issues. And especially all those citizens that are involved with Red Flag. That all go well with that training. And we see these things in there with Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Keller. We'll go to item four, an action item, an approval of the agenda found on pages one and two.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second.
A motion approved by Jacobson, Councilman Claus seconded.
Move to amend the agenda.
State your amendment.
To amend the agenda by consenting items B and C in old business and items A and B in new business, please.
Second.
Okay, I have a second by Welch. Any discussion? Seeing none at this juncture. Madam Clerk, would you call the question on the amendment?
This is Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson.
Yes.
Mr. Cromer.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Does anyone wish to change? Seeing no changes. Now we go to the motion now that has been amended for the passing of the agenda. Madam Clerk, call the question.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
This is Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Cromer.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Does anyone wish to change? I see no changes. The amendment and the agenda passes. Thank you. We go to the next action item, approval of the minutes. From April 18th, 2022, you can find out on pages three through 10.
Move to approve.
Jacobson made a second by Welch. Is there any discussion? Call the question, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
This is Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Cromer.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. So the minutes from 4/18/2022 are now recorded. And thank you, Madam Clerk, for that. Now, item six is for me, communications from the mayor. First, I'd ask you, Madam Clerk, do we have anybody that's going to present during this segment here?
Yes. But I don't know his name.
Who's that?
Somebody from the fire. Fire on the ice.
Yes, that would be Eric Burton.
Eric Burton, hello.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, how are you?
You're doing fine. You just don't look the same as you did in the flash on Friday. Go ahead, Eric.
That's all right. I wanted to talk about for just a moment, the Fire on the Ice Revival that is to take place July 18th through the 23rd. And we've got ministers from all over the United States that is going to be coming in. And we're, we want to see true transformation in the state of Alaska, in North Pole. And I truly believe that God has given us some great connections in Mr. Mayor and the great people here in the city of North Pole, Alaska, as well as other people around the state that are getting involved already, other ministers that are getting involved. And we invite you to come out and be a part of that in July. And then we are believing God to do great and miraculous things. I'm not sure how far you want me to go into this.
Ask Madam Clerk if she could share with us your flyer that she has. Would you please put that up, Melissa? We do have a flyer that shows who the speakers are in the, pretty much, but go ahead. You've got time. Let's use it wisely.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Can you share that, Melissa? Just give her a minute. One I want is up there. You can see it. She's trying to share the flyer that came, probably came to all the council's box. Well, she's trying to bring it up. Go ahead, Eric. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mayor. We, we want to come together with the city. We aren't coming in with an agenda. We're coming in very humbly. We want to come alongside the ministers and the people of the city, not to overlord, come over them and tell them, you know, the way they think, we think things should be done. There it is. But we want to come in and just allow the Lord to move in might and power. We want to see people healed. We will see people healed. We want to and will see people saved. And we will see miracle signs and wonders followed because the Bible says that miracle signs and wonders follow those who believe. And we are believing that God can transform this nation and that God can transform Alaska. And God has selected you for such a time as this to be a part of the Kingdom of God in a greater way, in a very powerful way. Because we truly believe that real transformative revival is coming to this nation and coming to this world, even in these hard times that we're in right now. And so we are believing for great things. And we love the people. We love all the people of Alaska. We've fallen in love with all of you. And we are excited to see what God is getting ready to do. We, we came in December of last year before Christmas. And we saw God already. We saw Him heal people during some of the meetings that were in. And people got saved and filled with the power of God. Just yesterday, we were at, what's it called? Born, not Born Again Believers, Golden Heart Fellowship with Marvin Carroll. And we saw several people get healed of different things, arthritis and different things, and reported that they were pain free. We saw many people at the altars over at Pastor Zara's Church, which is called Casa de Ablanza. And I preached over there. I talked about the sounds of revival and the sounds of heaven. And we saw people getting filled with the power of God, delivered of a lot of things in their lives. And so that, those types of things are just a precursor to what God is getting ready to do. So we've come this trip as well, just to prepare the ground, to meet some more people and to prepare the way for the Lord Jesus Christ. Because we believe that July is going to be a big blow up of God's power in this state and in this region. And so you can see the flyer on the screen here. And if you want to get some of those physically in your hand, there's a front and a back there, as you can see. You can pick those up at City Hall at KJNP, King Jesus North Pole Radio Station. And you can also pick some up at the North Pole Hotel. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, unless you have any questions.
Oh, yeah. I have some questions to get started with, Eric. So what time of day will you start? What time of night will you finish? This is for my police and my fire ambulance, so they'll know as well. What time do you expect to start and what time do you expect to finish each day?
Yes, sir. We are right now still formulating, putting together a schedule. But I can tell you this, in general, we would start right around 10 o'clock. And we would have service at least at 10 o'clock. And we would have activities, things going on probably throughout the day as well. And as far as when it ends, we'll be having a service every night at 7:00 PM for sure. When it ends, you know, just whenever God's finished, I know that may not help a lot, but you know, we'll see what happens on that end.
Okay. And how many do you anticipate that could, could actually be out there at KJNP on the grounds? How many hundreds?
You know, that's, that's a great, that's a great question. I, you know, realistically, I, I think that we could probably easily get 500 people out here. But I think that there's a great possibility that we could get a lot more if we really had to. We will be setting up a tent right in front of the radio station. Not quite where the radio tower is because we can't set up there. But it will be in the gravel area in the, the rounded driveway here facing out. So they have a lot of property. People can set up chairs, you know, as far back as they go, you know, as far back as the property goes. So, you know, I, it's kind of hard sometimes to anticipate exactly how many are going to be there. We're, we're planning logistically right now for at least 300 people. But we're believing for a lot more. We're believing.
So in regard to the logistics for that, you're going to have a shuttle service? So that people aren't just driving all around and getting lost. So you'll actually bring people from Chain of Lakes Resort and probably the hotel or wherever they're staying. I know there's time to put all that together, but you'll be bringing them back and forth, these services, correct?
So some new information that we just found out a few hours ago. Pastor Otis McCormick from New Jerusalem, we met with him earlier and he has opened up his entire property for parking.
Okay.
So it's literally right at the end of the driveway here of KJNP, as you know. And so we will be able to shuttle people from their cars in their parking area, right, right down the driveway into the, the radio station grounds.
Fantastic. I'm going to ask, first off, Chief Heineken, he, he's our chief for our fire department and emergency management for our, for our ambulance service. Chief Heineken, do you have any questions for Eric?
No, I don't have anything at this time.
And how about you, Chief, too, for our police department?
No, sir. Nothing.
Okay. And so now I'll turn to the council. Do they have questions or comments or advice? Well, seeing none, Eric, thanks for coming on board with us tonight. We'll, we'll see what we can do to help out and hopefully we'll make some headway. I don't know if you've talked with our contact, our manager at Hotel North Pole. Was that accomplished today or not? Are you aware?
Yes, and I will, Bridget's right here with me. Can I bring her? She's got the information on that.
Bridget, would you like to, this is Bridget Dennis. Hello?
Hello, Mayor. How are you?
I'm fine, thanks.
Good. Yeah, so I spoke with Wanda on maybe getting our prices lowered a little bit. But she said because of the new renovation that they've done and done some upgrades, they, they are unable to give us a bigger discount because she felt the price that they had given us was already a significant discount.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that's the new information that I had just received today from her.
Did you get the rooms you needed? A number of rooms?
Yeah, so far we have 11, but we may
Add one more.
Yes, I think we're going to add one more. So I'll give her a call and see if she can, you know, accommodate another room for us.
Okay, Bridget, that sounds fine. In my council, do you have any questions for Ms. Dennis? Or again, back to Eric, any questions, any comments? Anyone wants to help out, you know, I'm sure they'll be glad to take your help. And so Eric, are you, are you going to be a barbecue judge?
I'm real, I'm going, I'm going to make the statement right now. Yes, I will be there.
Okay, very good. That's at the Grange on July 4th. We'll save a rib for you. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. God bless you there.
You're welcome. Good night. So we're moving along here. In my communication for the mayor, I could tell you that I've been out with Cody Logi, our Public Works Director, quite a bit since you saw me back on April the 18th. And we're trying to do, we're trying to answer concerned citizens' questions about the snow removal or the lack thereof. And we're trying to get a handle on something that Mother Nature seemed to be winning. But it could have been a lot worse if we hadn't removed the snow and ice that we have removed. But there's a lot of areas, specifically Ford Subdivision, North Pole Library, as it runs into Ford Subdivision, all the way up Homestead. Past Homestead, going past Perimeter Road to where it finally ends up at. So I was with Ms. Valentine yesterday. She did what she could to stop her, her property from flooding with sandbags and things. I've been back and to Ford, and I've been to other neighborhoods too, like Baker Subdivision, North Star Subdivision. Seems like we've got a really good handle on, up around Patriot Loop, the high school and all that. That worked out really good. So, but we, we still have issues. We need to find a way, I guess, to get in our inventory of boiler. City of Fairbanks has four of those. What we would do, just have one. The state DOT, in contrast, only has two. And so when I came back to town, April 13th, from Lost Anchorage down there, that's the first thing I did at 9:05 at night was look right at DOT, opening up the culvert to open up Lake Pagoda. And so they were really working hard. And, and they finally got their second boiler back online. So I think we had better start looking at what we're going to do for a boiler. You know, because we have to keep these culverts open. So whether you know it or not, the three people that are working are working a lot of overtime in public works. And I'm sure that most citizens is seamless to them. They're not aware of it. And they're really doing a yobin's job to try to get our culverts and our streams and everything moving along. So Mother Nature's sort of like hard headed about this, but we're doing the best we can with the equipment. We did take delivery of our new front end loader, which is, again, at least 40% larger than the one that we had that was broken anyhow. So at least we're using new equipment there. I'm happy for that. And then discussing that, I'll tell you that I see that he's on right now. Danny Wallace is on with us right now. He has been selected and has accepted the offer to be our new Director of City Services, starting on Wednesday, the 25th of May at 1:00. Not 1:00 in the morning, but 1:00 in the afternoon. And Danny, if you can hear me, if you want to say hi, you may certainly do so. If you have a way to come on camera, you can do that too. But we're very fortunate to have him with us. Danny, you want to say hi?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. And my, my video is not working very well right now, but very glad to be a part of it. It's very interesting for me to sit on, this is the second meeting that I've watched right now. So very impressed with the overall organization, how things are being run, and very excited to have the opportunity to work with all of you.
Thank you, Danny. Appreciate that. So, you know, put it on your calendar if you want to come in and get to see him. Show him what you're doing as councilperson. I'm sure he'd appreciate that too. And know that he's got our undivided attention, at least for his first 90 days till he gets through as a probationary period. But we're going to work with him here because we've got a lot to do in this city. And it's, it's not going to be a, a job for the light of part, but this guy's got what it takes to get it done. So thank you and welcome aboard again. So we'll go to council member, oh, and before I finish, I tried to extend out the invitations that came from the Air Force. I didn't realize this, but they had two days, both May 12th and May 13th, so a Thursday and a Friday to celebrate the 354th Wing. I can't go to both days. I can't even go to the whole day that, that Friday, the 13th of May, as Chief Doot will tell us, is our police memorial day. So I'm not able to go to everything out at Ileson until about 2:00 in the afternoon. So I don't need to fly the simulator and all that. So I'll just get out there to the Thunderdome. Did anyone experience problems getting, if they were, if they received the invite? Did you have problems getting it to accept your RSVP? Because they said they forgot to put in civilian titles. So, you know, I just took the top title, which was a general. So I became a general overnight. But that's part of the issue there is, don't, don't worry about what you put. Did anyone try to put in for it and got it rejected? Or did they get it? Who's going to that on 13th? Did yours go through, Anton? Good, very good. So that's it for me, making sure that people got invited to it. And now we go to council members' questions of the mayor. Are there any questions? That's item seven. Seeing no questions, we'll move on. Oh, Jeff, thank you for raising your hand. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, we did have a previous email saying that we were having an executive session on Monday, May 9th. I will be out of state in Las Vegas, but I could certainly call in if you want to do it on the 9th still, if you have a quorum or another time.
Is the 9th or the 10th better? Because I haven't, you know, our counselor, Zane Wilson from CSG, doesn't get back into country till the night of the 6th, which is a Friday. So I'm trying to confirm with Nikki Lightly down at CSG if he'll be available for us on the 9th. Was, what would work better for the council, the 9th or the 10th? One's a Monday, one's a Tuesday. Does anyone have any druthers on a Monday or Tuesday? It should not be a long meeting.
Tuesday's fine for me.
How about Santa?
It'd work out. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Tuesday would work out?
I think so. Thank you.
Anton? I don't hear Anton there.
I was looking at my schedule.
Okay.
I just tend to have Monday scheduled for chamber stuff or council.
We may, we may stick with Monday. DeShawn, how's your schedule?
I'll be in English, but either day of work.
Either day of work, Miss Welch.
Monday, I would say.
Say again?
I would say Monday.
Okay. So we'll, we'll, we'll confirm with Nikki Lightly in the absence of our attorney. And she'll advise me. So it could either be Monday or Tuesday, either May 9th or 10th. Thank you very much. And that would do that. Now we're going to go to communications from department heads. So we'll start, we'll start with Miss Fogarty. Herman County.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a couple of things to report. We, last Thursday, we sent off our trial balance to Alliance CPAs, which is Gary Hutchinson's new firm. Or I guess it's not new. It's a merged firm with Cook and Hagerburg. And we did talk to Charles on Thursday. And Friday morning, Gary had sent an engagement letter, which I in turn forwarded to you folks, the council, which really basically means that we have started the audit. Those figures that we sent them and the trial balance, we are not to change at this point. If we find something that maybe got missed in this kind of interim process, we can let them know. But we, we will not be able to touch the 2021 in any way whatsoever at this point. But we are, they're starting that. Usually they do some back work and then they start in with a kind of what you would call kind of field work, checks and balances. We would run reports, any reports they ask. We would explain anything that they had questions on. It's, it's just an annual process. It's not any different from any other year. But anyway, I hope you received them. I did hear from Anton and Santa Claus that they received that letter and they, and they didn't have questions. So if you at any time have questions, just touch base with me. I'd be happy to answer them. And then at the last council meeting, you guys consented the resolution to change the account signers. And we said to stop by and sign during sometime last week. But we still need everyone else to come by and, and re-sign. What that does is replace what's at the bank right now. So just really, if you, anytime you can stop by City Hall and sign this document would be very helpful. And that's pretty much all I have right now. If I, any questions you have, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Miss Fogarty? And I think the next time we meet on May 16th, on our regular scheduled council meeting, you'll probably have financials for us too, won't you?
Yeah, we, we will. We're starting to work on that now since we had to kind of pull off all our other projects to get that stuff out to Gary last Thursday. We are, we are shifting our gears to work on that, that. I won't be at the next meeting because Michelle, myself and Melanie will be at a conference for Tyler. And, but I could probably make time to call in if, if need be.
You can make time to give the clerk the financials so that we can know. And could you discuss where we're at with Tyler now that I would think we're almost finished with your 24 to 36 hours a week working with them?
Well, we do have some things that, that need some catching up. But we did talk to Dee that today from Fairbanks. She retired recently.
Yes.
And she's willing to come on and kind of do some data entries, some backup stuff. And I also, I think she'd be a great advocate as, as Ted, like how Fairbanks' process is flowing and how we can kind of switch gears. And was a very good meeting today. She, she's going to start next Monday. And we're just now trying to kind of figure out where she's going to sit, what computer she's going to use, just logistic, all that.
Yeah, I'm sure we can find room for her in the chambers.
Well, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure we will. Any questions for Miss Fogarty, please? I see no questions. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Move on to Chief Heineken.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, council members. Just one thing I have for you tonight, and that's just another reminder, on May 21st is our open house. I did receive confirmation that Cruising with Santa is planning for that same day. So it's going to be a busy weekend, busy Saturday for North Pole. So it's going to be a busy weekend, busy Saturday for North Pole. I also heard rumor there's possibly a bazaar in the mall that same day. So these are good things. We actually like the other activities moving on in the city during our open house because it brings so many people in in, in just being involved around the city. So once again, just mark your calendars for that date. We look forward to seeing you.
What's that date again?
May twenty-first. May twenty-first. What a wonderful Saturday that'll be. I will miss that, Chief, because I'll still be in the hospital down in Wasilla, I believe. Any questions for the chief? Thank you, sir. We'll go to Chief Dutra next.
He's been having connection issues.
Yeah. We'll pass.
Oh, he's, he's coming right back. Hold on. Okay.
Is he coming back?
Yes.
Yes or no?
Yes, he's connecting right now.
I just don't see him here.
Chief Dutra, are you there?
I'm back now.
Thank you, Chief Dutra. What do you have for us, sir?
Oh, hello. Good evening, Council. I didn't make any notes. I've done an Anchorage and training, so I didn't have a chance. Been busy scheduled today, so running again. And just a couple of quick things. The May thirteenth ceremony at eleven o'clock, I hope everybody can join us for Police Memorial Day. We looks like we've got everything.
Chief, you're garbling out. Chief, you're garbling out, Chief.
The connection, I'm sure. Sorry.
Bad connection. Why don't you reconnect? And we'll go to the borough representative while you reconnect. There's something wrong there. Borough rep, are you ready?
Yep, that would be me. The meeting was attended via Zoom last Thursday. And the first report that I have on here is from the school board. They are still working on their, all their budget issues that they are doing. Because of course, they haven't gotten any true results of what money they have to spend, so they're still working on it. They're most likely, they will, at this point, they will lose any kind of music for the third, fourth graders up through middle school for the general like band and orchestra. And they also have a new calendar for the next, not this coming school year, but the school year after that. And they would like people's input on that. So please go to the school district website and vote on which calendar option you would like for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Back onto the assembly, one of the things that were very well attended was anything about the John Weaver Memorial Skate Park renovation, which is a skate park that is right south of the Colson Center in that area in, by the baseball fields. And so they originally had a budget for that, but now they are adding about another three hundred thousand dollars to add some kind of a bowl and some kind of railing or some kind of other ramp to go with it. Kind of confusing to those of us who are not skateboarders, I think. But it was all groovy and it was all very great and, and going to be a kick, you know, what skate park that should be bringing in lots of skateboarder and what they call a snow skate, snow skater, something like a snow skating, boarding crowd from outside to bring them in here for being tourists. We're going to see where that comes from. But by the time they get finished, they had more than a million dollars involved in that, in that whole thing. So that's a lot of money for for some young people who want to try to break their neck, I guess. But it seemed like it was, it was a very interesting, interested crowd and that they are willing to really put in, in some work also, keeping like in the wintertime, do the snow grooming of it so that they can actually use it with these specialized skateboards with little grooves on it so they can actually ride it even in the wintertime. So that was an interesting one. They're really working forwards, towards getting some apartments and domiciles built in there, too. So they recently, they re-sown some areas that's up in the area of college roads. Just north of north of College Road between Hayes Avenue and Ivanoff Drive, which is the area across from UAF pretty much in there. So when they figured they could put in quite a few multi-level, up to three-story apartment buildings in there, both available to some in the low end seniors and also in the top end, maybe even college students and people like that, and military, of course, as that was going on. They went through a thing talking about youth workers for elections. And the state has allowed that for, for our state elections that you can have children or youth, I should say, supervised, I think sixteen to eighteen to help work as election workers under the supervision, of course, of the adults that are there. And so now that they have done that, that means that we can use them for our local elections also within inside our borough municipal elections. The other one, they, of course, they passed the tax incentive for housing, which we have heard about. The ten percent or ten years abatement of borough taxes, if they are inside the city of North Pole or with inside the military zone. So that's, that's the thing that they did. If it's, I think it was two years if you were five or below. And so that was a nice one. But they wanted to have, make sure that the the ones that they were doing was that they were hooked up to municipal type water, not just private water, but sewer and water. And so they picked some areas outside the city of Fairbanks that were also could get like under the college water system, which meant, of course, the piece of property that they were looking at from the borough side, which was up off of Badger Road somewhere, does not have access to a public water. So that piece of property is kind of out of the, out of the running for that.
Six hundred acres up there, isn't it?
Yeah. And, and unless it, it can connect to a public water source and sewer source, they will not get the ten-year abatement, which I kind of thought was an interesting twist on the whole thing. What else was the last thing I was looking at? Oh, yeah, they also appropriated a hundred thousand dollars from the nine-one-one fund to put over so they, they can get a redundant safety answering point, a PSAP that has the interconnects and lapsing rate from special revenue projects that they are doing so that they can make sure that if one internet source goes down that they have for the nine-one-one that there's redundancy. And that's what that's all about. So they're moving some money around for our safety. And I think that is about it of anything that has any. Yep, that should be it.
Any questions for the borough rep? I see none. Thank you for your report. Please submit that to the clerk if you haven't already. Chief Dutra, you want to give it a shot again?
You hear me?
Right now we can. Yes, sir.
Yes. I'll make it quick. Keep cutting it out. Yeah, just the May thirteenth, eleven o'clock, which is a reminder for the Police Memorial Service. And don't forget, I'm in Anchorage. I apologize. We're not sending notes. I've been in Anchorage since Sunday, so the new door is installed in the garage. The other outside doors, I didn't see them get installed because I'm up there. So hopefully they're supposed to get installed today, so. The new blood drying equipment we approved last year is finally, has been finally built and is being shipped. So that's a positive. And that's all I got.
Any questions for Chief Dutra? Chief, when do you come back?
I'll be back late Thursday night.
Okay, so you'll be on duty Friday?
Sunday is quite a long week, but if you, I'm there.
I might need you on Friday. Thank you, Chief. So now we go to the clerk.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So I just wanted to remind everyone that I'm going to be gone for the first week in June. I'll be gone the fourth through the tenth for PD one for the Clerk's Academy. Ellie is going to be taking my place as the clerk for the night. So be nice. I will get you guys the special meeting information just as soon as we decide on a day and a time. Please make sure that you're checking your email. I've already signed quite a few things regarding to what we're talking about that night. I have one more sitting in my inbox that I just got to send you also. So please make sure that you guys read all of that so that we can make sure that we're making an informed decision for that land deal. And then I met with Code Publishing on Thursday before I left for a long weekend. And I think we are totally good to go on all of those code updates. So hopefully that means that our our ordinances and everything online will be up to date here pretty soon. And that's about all I have.
I have a question or two, maybe even a concern. Are you getting people fielding questions to you about the upcoming special election on June eleventh?
And yes, I've gotten actually had kind of a crazy question or a crazy one earlier today. So yes, I've been getting quite a few questions about it. And I had three or four phone calls today. They thought that there was actually going to be an in-person voting tomorrow. So they were calling me to ask me where that was.
Okay. And also, just so that you know, it's on your radar. I got a call from some people that are on the Borough Assembly. And they want to try to propose that they want to consolidate all voting in the future at the municipal and state and federal level, all for the second Tuesday in November. And I'm getting my stuff ducks in a row, talking to people who work precinct one seventy-five. And historically, what that means is try to cram that all into one day. And why we don't do that at this juncture. So I don't know if they'll get any traction on that. And if I find enough reasons to go against that, I will. I'll go on agenda to tell them whether it's a good thing or a bad thing. So thank you, Madam Clerk. Any questions at the clerk? Yes, DeShawn.
I have a question. Do we ever pick a web design, design for the city of North Pole?
No. So that, we need to put that right back on the agenda. I, I still, I'm still confident with my top two choices, well, actually with my top choice. And I really feel like we just need to go ahead and make that decision. And I'll put it back on the agenda in the next couple of weeks. It's a really long process, so I'd really like to get it going as soon as possible. And I feel like everybody was on board with moving forward with it, so.
Thank you, DeShawn. Does that answer your questions, sir?
Yes.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other questions for the clerk? Seeing none, we go to item nine, ongoing projects report. First thing I'll do to is go to the housing project. I'll give you an update. Brookside Park, I confirmed with Jerry Corner this afternoon after four o'clock that the Brookside Park Track D did close. And that is with a corporation called Latitude sixty-three. And they do know now what the covenants are on that land. So they will build some what, what they consider to be somewhat luxury homes, very nice homes. So based on the covenants on that land, they might get twenty-five and thirty homes in there. So that's a good thing. I also know that some of the small parcels on the other side of Busby Road, those have also closed. So Brookside Park only has, I think, about eleven other lots. And that's subject for a discussion two to three weeks from now. When Three Tier comes back, Three Tier Corporation, when they come back on board. So it looks like we're going to get housing there. And talking with Rick Watson from the wonderful world of up there at Stryker Loop and all up by the high school. And someone helped me with my memory bank here. What's the name of Stepping Stones Builders there? Things were really looking up good for him. So he was very appreciative that we did remove the snow and ice that we did up there because it's making it easy for him to get around. So he's rocking and rolling. So this year, he expects to have six eightplexes. That's forty-eight buildings built. And then next year, to go to another forty-eight. They wouldn't let him have the seventh eightplex. So he's not going to have a hundred four, he's going to have ninety-six. I do believe that when we're finished, we'll probably get what the Air Force wanted and needed, you know? So that's a good thing. And I would imagine June second, I think it is. If not the second, then on the third, I'll be down in Wasilla to talk to Three Bears about a little bit more of what we can put on their twenty-five acres. So that's an ongoing project. The next ongoing project report I'll give was when I went on behalf of the city to the, what they call the BIL, was the bipartisan infrastructure law briefing that was hosted by Senators Murkowski, Governor Stunleavy, and the Alaska Municipal League. And I went with Brent Sheets, and that was a two-day-long affair. I am being asked to go back again. I don't know how I'm going to do it on May the twenty-fourth, twenty-third, excuse me, twenty-third and twenty-fourth for a thing called Arctic X. So I'll be at the Arctic X Forum. And, and I'm on a panel to discuss the central heat plant. And that's just days before we have our final, that we have to turn into Department of Energy. And that's as much as I can tell you about that. And I think the last thing is where we're at with Ada. So I sent it to the clerk. I sent the Phase One environmental survey that was done by the corporation. I talked with Dr. Packy on Friday for a little more than an hour and fifteen minutes. So he's given me his professional briefing on what he did for that environmental assessment in the Jack Howard three area, that thirty-six acres. But the assessment is not complete yet. He cannot get back in there because of the snow and ice. And, but he has to go in and see these twenty cars or trucks or whatever they are. They have been abandoned in there for more than two decades to find out what they could have done on that soil. So that, that is when he'll finish. He's slated to come to us on May the sixteenth. That's our second meeting this month, on May the sixteenth, to give us a full briefing. So the environmental assessment, I sent it to Miss Dion. So Madam Clerk, you have it. When you get it, I want you folks on the council to please acknowledge receipt back to the clerk that you have it and go through it and be prepared to discuss. And we're going to discuss that next week anyhow. What we do have already for the executive session next week. I'll just let that go with that. So with that in mind, Madam Clerk, I'm ready to go to item ten. Do we have any Citizens for Citizens comments, limited to five minutes per citizen?
Do we have Dr. Olson on the line with us?
Okay. Jeannie Olson's with us?
I see her here. I asked her to unmute.
We'll just wait.
There we go. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, Jean Olson, eighteen ninety Hollowell Road. So I'm not in the city of North Pole, but I feel like sometimes I am affected by the decisions that the North Pole city government makes. And so I'm justifying on a couple of things right now. The, the first one is what you just were bringing up there, Mayor Welch, about the Jack Howard parcel three. And I, I have heard about it. I am aware that Ada has been trying to, you know, help with the development of housing for the F thirty-five people. And, you know, I've been involved a little bit. I attended a lot of those meetings with Shelley Fire, is it Firestone? Shelley, whoever that was, that we had, all the information gathering the feasibility studies. And, you know, there was that little, small voice of a few people that said, are you sure we can really do this? Do you really think we have the housing in the schools for this? Oh, yes, yes, we want this so bad. Well, now, you know, the Roosters Oh, yes, yes, we want this so bad. Well, now, you know, the roosters come to collect the eggs. And we don't have housing, and we realize that. So we're scrambling. But so now I understand that the city of North Pole is looking at purchasing this land. And I'm also involved in the PFAS information studies. And actually, the slough right there at the city hall, it's got PFAS in it, pretty high levels, not as high as what they would consider dangerous. A little bit below that. I think it's 27 parts per, what is it, billion?
No, it's per trillion, ma'am.
Trillion, but high, I mean, high.
Seventy, greater than 70 is considered high.
Considered in the federal government. Many states have it much lower than that.
But our state, our state is echoing greater than 70.
Right. And, you know, I mean, if I gave you some of the, you know, some purified water from the slough, would you drink it?
Nope.
Right, because it has PFAS in it. You know it does. And so now that land, I understand, over there, that Jack Howard land, not only is it like really high and soft lane, okay, fine, you know, we can, we can give them water, city water. But the PFAS is in the soil also. And I think that they measured like 45 parts per trillion, which, okay, all right, it's still safe. But in some states, that's not safe. I was an industrial hygienist in a prior life. And I watched the asbestos levels go down, 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 down. So, you know, this is another thing. And I think, okay, city of North Pole, why would you buy this? Would you buy this if you were a private developer, knowing how much contamination is on that soil? Probably not. So it's just a concern that I have. I, I can't, I don't understand why it's happening, except for maybe it's going to get, I don't know, you know, it's, I don't think it's in the city limits. But maybe you can then have it be in the city limits. And you can, but you can't property tax it because, or you can, but after 10 years, because now all new developments can have that option to have their property taxes waived. So it's just, it's just a boondoggle and a scandal, I guess, is what I would say. But, you know, I'm just a little tiny voice, and I can't fight City Hall on this one. But I can tell you, I am concerned that I would not buy that land. And maybe developers aren't going to buy it too, and that's why city of North Pole is. That's my first topic. My second topic is, I think it was last year about this time. I brought up the thought about the the online sales tax issue. And I don't think that's been resolved. That, and I still ask clients, I mean, I'm aware of people that live within the city limits and not. And at least three times more deliverable addresses with the 99705 ZIP code live outside the city limits than in North Pole. And I don't know how you could separate that out to, when you get your monthly check from the sales tax, how you can differentiate people in the post office and the two deliverable addresses in the city limits compared to the outside city limits. But I bet you are really taking in a lot more money than you should in sales tax. That's good for you, but if this was transparent, and many people knew about this, it would not be good. And you have been aware of this for more than a year. And I think all, one of the things that you could do to help, I mean, I try and raise the issue with my clients when they come. By the way, you need to add these four more digits on your ZIP code to exempt the sales tax. But the, but part of it is that many, many people come in, especially military, and they're used to sales tax. So they don't think anything of it, even if they live outside the city limits. So that's a thing. And maybe one of the things is it doesn't take much, make a nice postcard and say, are you paying sales tax unnecessarily? And you just put a little postcard in that's created to catch an eye. And you just mail it out to all these deliverable addresses. Then you're transparent, you know? Maybe you can't, maybe that Denver company is still not being able to help you make it so that it's automatically exempt from these outside the city limits taxes. But I worry that this is, you know, you know about this, and yet you're not being transparent. And I've been sitting on this. I just tell my clients when they come, and they go, oh, thanks for letting me know. But I think you're gathering way too much sales tax than you should be getting. That's just it. That's it. Thank you.
Would you entertain questions?
Absolutely.
I'll start first. I'm not going to speak towards the issue about the Jack Howard property because it's not opportune time. We're gathering data on that still. You've probably heard me just tell the clerk to pass that initial assessment out, so I don't want to go to that. But, you know, I have to do this like a Jeopardy, so I have to ask you a question. Are you aware when we started online sales tax?
Yes, it was a small little blurb in the paper.
Well, I don't write the paper, so I didn't make it a small little blurb, but are you aware?
It was, you know.
Are you aware that it was April of last year?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have a year's worth of data. Are you aware of who runs the remote sales tax program for more than 70-plus municipalities in the state?
Yes, Alaska, yes, Alaska Municipal League.
That's correct. You're right. So in my first briefing, are you aware that June the 6th of 2019 is when Larry Persilli briefed us on the capability of doing that?
I wasn't aware that Larry was the one that briefed you on that, but that's also good to know.
Yeah, it's good to know. And so, and are you aware there is a glitch? And people always will have the ability to write to whatever company they bought something from. Are you aware that all they have to do is write to them? And even the city of North Pole would provide something to say whether they do or do not live in the city limits?
I am aware of that, Mayor. And at times, I mean, there's times that I go, you know what, it's just not worth the $2. It's just not worth it. And so you get the $2, you know? And to go online or to call somebody, you know, that doesn't even know, you know, they just think, okay, you're in North Pole. No, I'm not really honest, and it's just not worth my time. So you get my $2. You get my 60 cents or whatever. And I just go, it's fine. Because there's many online companies that you try and put those last four numbers in, and their website doesn't allow it. And I also am aware that I can come down and fill out a form, and it'll cost you the city hall more to process that little $2 or 65 cents or whatever than it's worth. And I'm cognizant of that, and I will not do that to you. But I also think that you should be more transparent about this and inform people, say, hey, look, if you can, contact Amazon and put in those last four numbers. I still, I have a little sticky on my computer because I can't remember my last four numbers.
Sure.
So anyway.
Can you tell me, tell me if you're aware of the maximum amount anyone could pay in sales tax in the city in the first place?
I think it's $12, but I can't remember exactly.
Five and a half percent of 200, which is $11.
Okay, I was close.
Yeah, you're close. So I just thought you might know that, but
But, but even if it.
Yeah, to run this city, are you aware what it costs now for this year? Do you know what we budgeted for this year?
No.
7.33 million. And are you aware of what we may be paying just to have the snow and ice removed here?
A couple of million at least, as I saw in your minutes.
No, that might be the borough. That's, I mean, that might be the city of Fairbanks. Now, we're, it was unbudgeted. So are you aware, it's, are you not aware? So I'll just say it's $630,000, which is approximately $300 for every man, woman, and child that lives in the city limits. So.
I mean, and I, and I think that having online sales tax is a fair thing. I agree that that is something that people should do. And that many of us go online and do stuff because we cannot get things in Fairbanks. And so I would rather shop locally, but there are oftentimes, it's just not here, and that's why I go online.
Sure.
But, but, but to be fair, Mayor and City Council, I really think, I encourage you to create some kind of postcard. I, I mean, and just mail it out. It's like nickels and dimes to do a bulk mailing like that, like you would do for a political ad. And you just mail it to all the deliverable addresses in the North Pole city limits that are outside and not post office boxes.
Would you please explain that again? Why would I deliver it to my city when I deliver it to people who don't live in the city?
You would, no, yes, maybe I misspoke, but yes, you want to deliver it to the outside the city limits, not the post office people, nor the two city addresses.
I'll ask one last question before I turn to the council. Are you aware that through Senator Murkowski, I made an attempt and had nothing but a stone wall from the US Postal Service to give us a separate ZIP code?
Yeah, that's a booger, isn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, even you can't fight the government at a certain point. You know, I mean, I'm sitting there going, I can't fight Ada, and I can't fight the military. And I realize that this is really a wrong thing to do, to put housing on contaminated soil. Why would you do that? I wouldn't buy that land. But, and then are you liable for that? Because you know about it? I mean, to me, that developer, the person that owns it right now has to say that we know this is happening. You guys know that it's contaminated. And there is no real feasible way to get rid of PFAS. I mean, the soft lane, you go, okay, well, you know, eventually it's going to flow away, but not the PFAS.
Would you mind joining us on May 16th when Dr. Packy gives his report?
Not only will I not mind, I would be delighted and honored.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that, Jean. Mayor Jacob, I can always call Mayor. Councilwoman Jacobson, go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. Good to hear you, Jeanie. Were you aware, Dr. Olson, that even before the online sales tax, the city of North Pole had problems with businesses charging non-city residents the sales tax? And that the city, Tricia and I gave those non-residents the opportunity to get their sales tax reimbursed or not charged to them?
Yes, I was, not mayor, former mayor Jacobson. Yes, I was doing my taxes one year, a long time ago, probably 10 years ago. And I saw that ACS had put a sales tax on my phone bill. And I went, and that was after ACS long gone left North Pole, and they were based out of Anchorage, and they had no idea. And I went, I had to come down to the city hall and get a letter. So yes, I am aware of that. And I thought, how many other people don't look at their phone bills like that? You just don't. You just pay it. But I was going through my taxes and said, huh, look at this. So yes, I am aware. It's a problem. Thank you.
Any question, Patrice, is that Tricia that has a question? Who's Patrice?
That's Jeanie.
Yeah, that's not me.
No. Someone has their hand raised as Patrice's iPhone. Would you identify yourself and have you identified yourself to the clerk?
Sure. No, I wasn't sure how to do that. This is Patrice Lee. And clerk, if you would help me with that, please.
How you would like me to identify myself? Yes.
Okay, then you'll have to contact me ahead of time so that I can make sure that we know.
Okay, you kind of broke up a little bit, so I could.
The deadline to talk for the citizens' comments is 1 o'clock the day of the meeting.
Okay, I apologize. I didn't make that, so.
And Mayor.
Make comments tonight, then.
The next opportunity will be May 16th, and her phone number is 488-8583.
Thank you very much. I will make the proper request to speak, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. One more thing I might add, Mayor. Melissa, I contacted her today, and she was awesome. She was helpful and called me right back as soon as she could. And sent me the Zoom link and told me the, nope, nope, even though City Hall is open, nope, we're still meeting remotely. And so she was very helpful, and I appreciate that, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to go now to Old Business, item 11 is Old Business. And we have item A, Ordinance 2209, an ordinance of the city of North Pole to amend the Personnel System Code. You'll find that on pages 11 through 26, and I'm scrolling down to that. Let me get down there, please. I don't have a split screen tonight here at the House. So all of a sudden, I'm one page off. Here I am. So it's wishing to grow our personnel system. This is being introduced in advance by me today with possible adoption. But if it's an ordinance, Madam Clerk, this is the second time that we've talked about it, so it could be adopted today. And do we have any changes to it that are made?
Well, we first have to move to adopt.
Yeah, move to adopt. I want to make a motion to adopt this ordinance 22, 2022-09. The personal. Motion by Welch, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Santa. Now we go into discussion.
Move to amend.
State your amendment.
In section 2.36.323, Personal Review Board, Paragraph B, a substitute.
What page is that on, sir?
I don't have page numbers on the printout.
It should have been in your packet with page number. Madam Clerk, what page number is that?
I'm sorry, I don't have it up.
Hang on. Page 23, is that the part of Personal Review Board?
Paper copy two, so.
Yeah, thank you.
That is page 26, page 26.
Okay, 26.
25, 26.
26, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Welch.
So move to substitute where it says the Human Resources Administrative Service will serve as the clerk. Every time you see clerk in that paragraph, it's changed to secretary. So there's no confusion about city clerk, clerk, or secretary in that role.
No ambiguity.
Yes, and then also on the last section of the whole ordinance, that would be.
D, section D.
Section D of 2.36.1415 Volunteer Lead Bank Program. Remove the "and" every time you see the city clerk crossed out in three parts on B. Paragraph, the introduction, paragraph C, and paragraph D.
Remove the conjunction "and." Does everyone hear that?
Yes, second that.
Okay. Any more discussion? Madam Clerk, call the question.
Okay, Mr. Jacobson.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Kramer.
Yes.
Welch.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Is anyone wish to change or vote? Now, on this item, as it's now been amended, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
This is Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, anyone to change their vote? So we're going to adopt that. Ordinance 2209 for the city of North Pole Personnel System Code. Congratulations for you and Ellie working so hard on that. Well, let's see. We're going to go to item 13, I believe, Council Comments. And who's first, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you. Several things. One is that I will be traveling out of state, May 5th through the 14th. So I request that on the executive session night, whether it's the 9th or 10th, that the city clerk email it to me at my jjacobson57@gmail.com email so that I don't have to take the city of North Pole laptop, the city of Fairbanks laptop, and everything else with me to four different states and cities. It simply, it would make it simple for me not to have so much electronics.
The invite?
Yeah, it's just the invite. That way I can log on on my iPhone and participate.
Where are you going, Jeff?
I will be flying to Phoenix for my great niece's wedding in Cholo, Arizona. And then I'll be going to Las Vegas for a waste expo to buy new garbage trucks for the city of Fairbanks. And then I'll be traveling to Utah Salt Lake City to visit with my grandsons, and then back home again.
So I guess I can't carry your laptops for you, you know, I'd be your bag boy, see?
Exactly. So I will miss the Police Memorial and the F-35. I'm sorry, I'll be missing those two events, but I will not be here in town. One thing I am concerned about with the two eightplexes, 48 and 48, that's 96 families moving into the Stillmire Estates, that Patriot Drive and Overchston Highway may be a traffic jam in the morning as everybody tries to get out. So we might want to have some sort of traffic study to see how to address that, so we don't have people taking chances to get in and out of that with all the. people taking chances to get in and out of that, uh, with all the, the, the traffic volume.
Um, good idea, but I think in our developer's agreement that, uh, he had already done that. I got to go back and look and see.
Great. I was just, uh, sharing that. And then, um, I had sent Mayor and Melissa, information from the Fast Planning Group, uh, several weeks ago, uh, we received a binder from a group that was concerned about the, uh, the Toke, uh, ore development, the Mancho Ore Transportation Plan, using the Richardson Highway to, uh, have double, uh, long, uh, ore trucks traveling from Toke to, uh, north of Fairbanks. Um, the Fast Planning, uh, wrote a letter to DOT requesting a, a further study on that transportation plan, and there was a lot of good testimony, uh, at the Fast Planning Meeting. Um, and I was, uh, requested that this mayor and the city clerk send that out to all council members, so you can read some of the points and concerns that were shared by, uh, quite a few people on that transportation plan, so that if we would like as a council to, um, write a resolution or something like that, it would give us some food for thought as far as what are some of the salient points to, uh, bring up regarding, uh, a more specific transportation plan rather than just saying, this is what's going to happen. Um, asking them to take, uh, precautions to make sure that our, our, uh, community stays safe with that large volume of heavy traffic.
And, um, may I ask you something, uh, even though it's your, your report here? Are you aware that there's a thing about that corridor where, for whatever reason, Mayor Madely and Mayor Welch were left off of that, what they call bifurcation of that process, and now we're being asked to join them. We did get a, 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 a question or a, a thing today that, uh, advisory committee, they apologize, they're not going to be able to do it tomorrow because they need more time. But, uh, do you think that the, uh, mayor of Fairbanks and the mayor of North Pole should not be on that committee? We are on the policy board.
I think you should be on that committee. That's disappointing.
Yeah. So, so what they were going to kick off on May ninth, that, or, or tomorrow is going to be now scheduled for May ninth at one PM. So I'll, I'll try to keep the council in the loop. Thank you. Appreciate that. And I thank you for your patience with me.
No problem. And congratulations to Danny Wallace, our new, uh, Director of Public Services. And that's my comments for tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff. Who's next?
You say Keller?
I did, sorry.
You're good. Communication errors. Uh, first off, welcome Danny Wallace um, to North Pole. Uh, second off, I, um, will not be attending the, um, Police Memorial due to me being at, uh, I'll some the whole day. Uh, it's going to get busy here in North Pole with everything, so, uh, divide and conquer. Um, I just, um, still amazed at all the changes that are happening with the increased sun. And, uh, I'm think, thankful the, uh, tax assessment didn't come through my, uh, neighborhood this last week because I had lakefront property with all the melting, as I'm pretty sure a lot of other people did. Um, even had my girls, uh, like paddle boarding in it, so trying to make the most of it. Um, and, uh, I, um, looking forward to more barbecuing. So, warm weather, less water, standing water at least, and, um, looking forward to, to seeing more community members.
Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Anton.
Very often do I not have anything to say except for I don't have anything to say.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Um, I have a question. Are we going to be hearing from the HR manager each time, or we just don't, we won't hear just from the clerk?
Only when, only when the, only when the HR manager has something to report. Right now, she's not, uh, giving us a report because she's got works in progress at this point.
Okay, I was just curious. That was all for me.
She's not on the, she's not on a director's level either, so we're discussing council members and directors, but as time goes on, when she takes on projects, she may very well be given an update. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Danny Wallace. I hope everybody's enjoying the nice weather we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So it's really, uh, coming, I see all the birch tree pollen, I see, uh, the mosquitoes are out already. Uh, last two days, we hit sixty-one degrees. Uh, uh, whether we do that again this week remains to be seen. Boy, we sure don't need another, uh, winter like what we just went through. I'm always looking at the National Climatic Prediction Center to see that we're still steady in, uh, El, uh, La Nina. There's only a ten percent chance we'll go to El Nino. So I would imagine that things will remain cooled down. I'm sure praying that we get enough wetness and not dryness so that we, um, don't have a fire season, because boy, that would just be the I won't say the icing on the cake, it'd be something else worse than that. And we're really, um, on the teeter totter with this here. Uh, I think I, I appreciate the fact that I could, uh, meet with, uh, Jeff Jacobson downtown on Wednesday, so I could try to figure out um, what we're getting and what we're not getting. Um, I'm not always quick to pat someone on the back. I, I'm a little disturbed what we don't get sometimes out of Alaska DOT, but I think there's a lot of politics involved in it. And I think they're playing a game between the Senate and the House about whether there's going to be capital money, like for equipment, personnel, and all to work versus PFD. So, nothing's free. And so if we're going to get the PFD, I'm getting a lot of letters from people that are so angry about all the taxes they're paying. And, uh, they, they believe that, that we're supposed to be scraping up even the ice off the roads, which is not true. We're done the best that we can. It's not, it's not always going to be so nice and tidy, and it's really hectic to try to orchestrate and bring someone in here and get it done. But I, I am a firm believer, if this current administration thinks that things should go down to the lowest level possible, which is our political subdivision, City of North Pole, then they should be willing to help us find a way to get the equipment and the personnel, because as it stands now, they really don't have that for us. And so when you take someone who's paid eighty thousand dollars to put in a new parking lot, and then it's underwater, and it's because there's no one proactively, um, coming out to open up the covert in that parking lot all the way across street to McDonald's, and I have to get a call while I'm down in Anchorage. So I'm riding herd with somebody bringing me up here, and I'm looking at that on the scene at nine oh five at night. And the business owners would swear they haven't done their due. Yes, they have. They've done what they can, that you just don't open it up. It doesn't just open up. Well, they were only here twenty minutes. They're, you're into the covert for twenty minutes, but now they've been over here at the McDonald's for more than an hour. So eventually they did get it open. So I often wonder what we could do if we had our own equipment and our own people, because our three guys are working themselves to death. And, uh, I don't know, um, what we, we can do to be better, but a lot of people feel that we're supposed to come into their private yards and remove their snow. And I don't know why they feel that. So you get all this thrown out there, well, I've paid my taxes the last thirty years and the other yet, I bet you have. But the truth of the matter is, I can't come into your yard. I can go to the right of way, go to the side of the road, and you know, we, we tried to sneak a little bit of a shovel full here and there, and I mean a big shovel. I don't mean a hand shovel. But we can only do so much without hurting your property, and that's part of the issue that we have, so we're, we're going to have to find a way to bring people in. Um, and the last thing is that, uh, I'm hoping that we get some help from you guys, that we could have some kind of meaningful, um, celebration for the Fourth of July. The North Pole Community Chamber of Commerce has a whole new group of people. They're trying to get a restart. So on May the twelfth, that's on a Thursday, I'm sure that I'll be over at, um, at, um, the McKinley Bank to talk to them. But I'm trying to put other people together with them, so the synergy of what they all do would give us like a color run on the Fourth of July, the guns and hoses with the uh, police versus the, uh, Fire Department baseball game, try to have another cook-off like we did last year. You know, and, uh, instead of having three hundred fifty people, maybe we'll get five hundred people to come out or more. But, you know, that's not easy to do, and, uh, so I'd let it go at that, and I'll say thank you for listening to me up here tonight, and we'll do the best we can in the future. I wish everybody keep your eyes wide open. Uh, let's keep our, our city going. We're doing the best we can under the circumstances, and I think there's better days ahead for us. So with that, I'll go to item fourteen, a call for adjournment.
Well, happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there.
Move to adjourn. That's my fortieth anniversary, by the way, so. On that Mother's Day this year, so. So there's a motion to adjourn. I have a second.
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 Second. So we call ourselves adjourned at eight twenty-one, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Good night, all. Bye.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Are you feeling better?
Uh, yeah, I can tell you, Mister, Mister, uh, Mister chiropractor today did, did me a, a really good one, so, and so did the hot springs. I was able to go to the hot springs and
Okay, cool.
And just, uh, kind of be in it for about an hour and a half in the hottest part, and it wasn't very hot today compared to, so. Yeah.
I feel a little better. All right.
Yeah, so that was, that was a good, that was a good thing for me. My daughter, my daughter and daughter took care of me, so.